I'm going to call this meeting of the Somerville City Council to order. In accordance with the Acts, with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting of the City Council may be conducted via remote participation. Please note, video and audio of this meeting is being recorded and may be shown live on local access government channels and on the City of Somerville website and will be available for future review. Will the clerk please call the roll?
This is Roll Call, Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Davis. Counselor Wilson.
Present.
Counselor Said.
Present.
Counselor Scott. Counselor Mbah.
Present.
Counselor Burnley.
Present.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Present.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Here.
With nine counselors present and two absent, we have a quorum.
Excellent. Counselor Davis has a family obligation, and Counselor Scott will be joining us shortly. Pursuant to our Rule 32, let it be known that this City Council salutes the flag of the United States of America and let us recall our oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth to the best of our abilities and understanding. We begin our meetings with a moment of silence. Are there any counselors who wish to say a few words about members of our community? Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remember Franklin De Amblerd, who is a member of the Somerville community, Haitian member of the Somerville community, founding member of the Somerville Haitian Coalition, which did a lot, especially in times of earthquakes and problems at home. Back in Haiti, he really looked out for a lot of people, and he unfortunately passed away this week. I just want to remember him and keep him in my heart.
Thank you. Yes, I know that the administration is also planning some more formal citywide remembrances for the, a really amazing legacy. So, everyone in the chamber who is able, if you will, please rise for a moment of silence. You may be seated. So, colleagues, usually we take a number of items out of order when we have members of the public to speak, but tonight, the agenda is actually succinct enough at the, at the front end that we can go in order and we'll still get to all of our public speakers quickly. Before we get started, I want to take a moment to recognize that we are joined tonight by a great deal of residents from the public schools community. We have students and parents and staff and community supporters who just had a rally outside of City Hall in support of fully funded public schools in the upcoming budget. I want to thank you all very much for being here. In particular, I want to say there were some really amazing signs from our students, and I want to shout out especially my friend Shirley, whose sign says, "Boo, give us the money." Thank you, Shirley. So, we do not have any items on tonight's agenda about this. All of us obviously hold an extremely high regard, the school committee that are working through this process with the administration right now, and we are very much paying attention to what is going on, and we look forward to working with all of you, and I want to just ensure you, assure you that this is very much a priority for all of us on the City Council. So, thank you all again for being here. We look forward to working with you. And with that, next item, please.
Item 1.3 is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 28, 2024.
Seeing no discussion, that item is approved.
Item 3.1 is a grant of location from Eversource to install 10 feet of conduit in Quincy Street from utility pole 296 over 6 to a point of pickup at 30 Quincy Street.
I now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak on that item? All right, why don't we lay this on the table until Jackie can join us? Next item, please.
Item 4.1 is a resolution by Counselors Klingon, Davis, Said, Burnley, Strezzo, Wilson, and Pineda Newfeld in support of an act relative to the future of clean heat in the Commonwealth and an act establishing a moratorium on new gas system expansion.
I'd like to co-sponsor this as well. Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would the clerk mind reading the resolution? Okay.
A resolution in support of an act relative, a resolution in support of an act relative to the future of clean heat in the Commonwealth and an act establishing a moratorium on new gas system expansion. Whereas Massachusetts has a mandate to achieve net zero emissions by 2050, requiring that buildings which are responsible for one-third of all climate damaging emissions must stop burning carbon-based combustible fuels such as natural gas, which is 95% methane, and whereas large methane pipeline system expansions such as the Eversource Western Massachusetts Reliability Project in Springfield are currently being proposed in Massachusetts, waste resources that are needed for the transition, and whereas geothermal technology is already being used to replace the burning of carbon fuels with cleaner, safer, non-combusting renewable energy using heat pumps to heat and cool our buildings, and whereas under the current Massachusetts Gas System Enhancement Program, gas companies will continue to spend billions installing new replacement methane pipes, and whereas under the GSEP, ratepayers would be paying off the new replacement pipes for 50 years, long after they have been retired, placing a burden on ratepayers and wasting resources that are needed for the transition to non-combustible fuels, and whereas advanced leak repair is vastly less expensive than replacing pipes and is safe and effective at controlling leaks, and whereas the transition off methane cannot be achieved by individual action alone because households with means will switch to heat pumps, leaving lower-income households to shoulder the burden of maintaining the entire system, and whereas the transition requires a strategic plan to retire the gas distribution system neighborhood by neighborhood, replacing it with non-combusting energy, and whereas Somerville is committed to moving off methane and doing so in a fair and equitable manner, now therefore be it resolved that the Somerville City Council supports pending legislation, Senate Bill 2105, and still in committee, House Bill 3203, an act relative to the future of clean heat in the Commonwealth, and Senate Bill 2135, and still in committee, House Bill 3237, an act establishing a moratorium on new gas system expansion, and be it further resolved that the Somerville City Council supports the creation of a strategic plan for the neighborhood by neighborhood transition from methane to clean heat, provided either through air-source heat pumps or through thermal energy infrastructure such as networked geothermal, and be it further resolved that the Somerville City Council supports the Department of Public Utilities to lead the planning process for a phased transition off methane to clean electrical and thermal energy, and in consultation with the city, to transition with least cost and disruption and with equity and affordability for all, and be it further resolved that the Somerville City Council supports a transition that includes using advanced leak repairs where appropriate, prioritizing the largest volume leaks to reduce or eliminate emissions for a decade or more until a pipe can be retired or transitioned, retiring gas pipes by street segment or neighborhood prioritizing leak-prone pipes, while moving the connected customers to electric appliances and air-source heat pumps, ground-source heat pumps, or networked geothermal systems, and be it further resolved that the Somerville City Council urges National Grid and Eversource to work with the city to plan and implement a pilot networked geothermal project in our town, and be it further resolved that the clerk of the City of Somerville send a copy of this resolution to the Governor, Maura Healy, Senate President, Karen Spilka, House Speaker, Ronald Mariano, each member of the Legislative Delegation for the City of Somerville, Senator Patricia Jalen, Representative Erica Uterhoven, Representative Christine Barber, and Representative Mike Conley, EEA Secretary Rebecca Tepper, and DPU Chair, James Van Nostrand.
Thank you, Mrs., Ms., I'm sorry, thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading that. I know it was a mouthful, but a lot of hard work was put into that resolution. I worked with myself. Most of the work was done by Mothers Out Front, who I worked with, Ms. Lindsay Luck over there from my ward, and she was consulting with her cohort of, group of mothers out front. And, you know, I'm really excited to bring this forward. You know, one of my main motivating drivers for this is, I think about people that live in mystic housing and how they, they rely on their, their kitchen, they don't, you know, maybe they don't get to eat out as many, as many times as some of our well-off residents, and, you know, they're basically stuck with these gas stoves. They don't have the option to go off of anything, and I can only imagine the amount of methane burnt, you know, burnt natural gas that is, those deposits that are accumulated in, in those apartments. So, you know, we have to compel the, the, the energy companies to do something about this. This bill does that. It's, it's, it's a really exciting, has a lot of great provisions in it. I'll let the professionals speak to that, but I just want to say I'm happy, I'm proud to bring this forward, and thank you all for, for signing on. You know, we have these climate goals, and we're not going to reach them unless there's, English government uses its muscle a little bit to, to get us in the right direction, and we're hoping that these bills come out, you know, that one of them has been voted out favorably out of committee, the other two are still in committee. Hopefully, they'll also be voted favorably out, and hopefully, we can, we can see these bills come, get signed into law. With our support, and hopefully, other communities will follow suit. Hopefully, that will happen, as well as the advocacy of Mothers Out Front, and, Miss, I'm going to, I'm going to invite up Somerville resident Ed Wall to speak, if you wouldn't mind allowing me to sponsor, Mr. President, with your indulgence, colleagues.
Of course. Please.
Mr.
Jesse, can I say a few words?
Of course, yeah. So, I'd like to also sponsor Lindsay Luck from Mothers Out Front.
He's in the cleanup batting position.
And just please introduce yourself for our records.
Right. I'm Lindsay Luke. I, I live at 13 Sargent Avenue in Winter Hill, and Jesse is my counselor. I thank you very much for the chance to be here. You know, a lot of the important work that's being done about the climate is being done at the local level, and it is so exciting that Somerville is viewed as a leader in this area, and I'm delighted that it looks like we are going to be the first in the state to pass this resolution. This is something that Mothers Out Front is trying to get past at as many municipalities as possible in order to pressure the state to take the action that just has to be taken in order for us to make this transition equitably and affordably for everyone. So, I'm, just want to underline something that I just learned recently, that natural gas, natural gas is really methane, it's 95% methane, and the rest is pollution that results from the way it's gotten out of the ground. I didn't know that. And it's leaking all over the place, in the mining process, and in our homes, and from the pipes that deliver it to our houses. So, you know, that's, we really have to get off that as fast as we can. But we can't let it happen randomly. If people just who have the values and the resources to electrify their homes get off the system wherever they are throughout Somerville, it is going to leave fewer and fewer people to support the costs of maintaining and the capital costs of paying off the existing gas delivery system. We just can't let that happen. So, these laws will help to contribute to a structure that results in the pruning of the system neighborhood by neighborhood so that people, a small number of people aren't stuck paying the bill at the end. The third thing is that if we're going to get onto a new, clean, safe system of energy, right now, the utilities build the infrastructure, and then the ratepayers pay it off over time. Well, that same structure can be used to get us all onto heat pumps, you know, whether they're air-source, whether they're geothermal, hopefully, geothermal networked systems are the most efficient. You know, those things can all be done by the utilities and then paid off by the ratepayers using exactly the same principle that's in effect now. So, but we need to have to have the legislative structure to enable that. So, in addition to asking you to support the legislation, though, we've also put in the resolution that we're hoping that the council will commit to working with the utilities to do the plan that's going to make this possible, and also to work with National Grid and Eversource to develop the pilot project of networked geothermal that we are hoping to have in Somerville before long. So, thank you, and on that note, Ed will just give you a quick rundown on the technicalities of the legislation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the City Council. My name's Edward Wall. I live in 80 Winslow Avenue in Somerville. I was part of the Gas Transition Allies, which were helped write part of this bill that Senator Cream is sponsoring, and that on the House side, Steve Owens is sponsoring. I also get involved with the Mothers Out Front Somerville chapter, as well as part of the Elder's Climate Action Legislative Team, and on the legislative team of the Mothers Out Front throughout the state. I want to give you an idea what the status of this bill is, Senate 2105, the future of clean heat. It was reported out of the Joint Committee on Transportation, Utilities, and Energy on March 28, and is now before the Senate Committee on Ways and Means. And we expect that this bill will be part of an omnibus bill that'll come out sometime in the month of, maybe the end of April, maybe in, in May. And then it'll go to Conference Committee with a House version, and we'll go through the sausage-making process of coming up with the legislation. The key provisions of the bill that we hope to see in the omnibus bill are outlined in the handout I put on each one of your desks. I want to provide you an overview of the role of this bill. At the highest level, it is to provide a pathway for the gas utilities to stay in the business of providing energy, but not gas. But we want, we don't want the gas utilities to go away because they're an essential part of this transition. They just need to transform their business to provide renewable, non-combusting thermal energy, and that technology is available. It's available, heat pump technologies, solar thermal, a whole range of different technologies that are available. The problem is, the gas companies aren't allowed to do that. So, we have to change the mission of the gas companies, and there's a provision in the bill that allows them to provide non-combusting thermal energy and not just gas, and that's a key provision. That's a key structural part of this bill. It also, the reason the gas companies are so critical here, they have the trained workforce. They know how to lay pipes. They have the vehicles to do it. They have the customers. They have the rights away in the street to use those streets to put in geothermal technology and other technologies to, to go ahead and heat our homes with a safe heating fuel. That fuel being really heated groundwater coming up from the temperature. I won't get into the technology of it. It's going to, I can get very nerdy about this, but I won't do that tonight. Another key provision of this bill is that will, it will not require the Department of Public Utilities to approve a pipeline that is applied for, by the utilities. Right now, if the utilities apply for a new pipeline, the DPU is really bound to respect that because the utilities have an obligation to serve their customers. And I talked about the obligation to serve in the beginning. We'll expand that, not just to provide gas, but to provide non-combusting thermal energy. But instead now, the DPU, this bill gives the DPU authority to require the utilities to show that there is no alternative to gas before they can have a pipeline put in, and that could be electric heat. It could be depending on how the rate structure is, if you, so there are a whole bunch of possibilities and, and a wide range of discretion now that the DPU has to go ahead and find alternatives to the pipeline gas structure. The bill also requires the gas companies to actually create plans to move gas customers off of gas, and it's a benchmark of so many percentage of the gas companies each year have to be moved off of gas, and that's part of this bill. Another part of this bill is that it assures there's funding and training for gas company workers who are, have to change their jobs, remove their jobs, and that's a upside by another couple of bills that are before the legislature right now to assure that those gas workers will end up with a good wage and supporting their families. And these gas company workers are our neighbors. We live by them. They, they live next door, so these are people we have to provide for. And I'm also pleased to know that the, this city has received a $50,000 grant right now to go ahead and plan where the next geothermal district would be in Somerville, and I hope it's down around Route 93 in that series of streets that are named after the states because that's an ideal location for that, and there are a bunch of other ideal locations in the City of Somerville where this can really work. I'd be pleased to answer any questions you may have, either now or I'll stick around a little bit if someone wants to jawbone a little bit. So, thank you very much.
Thank you both very much. Are there questions from counselors? I will say the term "natural gas" is one of the great public relations coups for fracking. Yeah. There's not really another term that has caught on. Thank you very much, Counselor Klingon, and thank you both.
Thank you.
Counselor Mbah would like to sign on for that as well. The whole council. Which brings us to our next item.
Item 4.2 is a resolution by Counselor Strezzo in support of the I Am Bill, an act to increase access to disposable menstrual products in prisons, homeless shelters, and public schools.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld would like to sign on. Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you. So, menstrual equity is a big issue for me. I think that menstrual products should be free and accessible in every bathroom, every public bathroom in the state and the Commonwealth and in the nation, and we aren't there yet. I did, I, I did put forward a budget request, and I'm, I'm waiting and excited to hear how the administration will be putting this pilot program for all free menstrual products in city-owned bathrooms, but at a state level, we're still not there, and there are numerous communities throughout the Commonwealth that don't have free menstrual products. So, I am putting this forward as, as this resolution forward, I worked with Mass Now to, to put this forward, who has been doing incredible work to make sure this gets to the, gets to the goal and we get a touchdown with it. It's about as far as I go with football references. Ed, I do want to read a couple of lines from, from this resolution because I think it needs to be said. It's a, it's a basic body function, and it is a public health issue, and having, the fact that period poverty is very real, it exists in our community. Approximately 1 out of 10 people who menstruate in Massachusetts live in poverty and struggle to pay for menstrual products. The federal government does not allow SNAP benefits or WIC benefit funds to be used for menstrual products. And additionally, over half of the school nurses report students missing class to obtain menstrual products, and a quarter of shelters did not distribute menstrual products. Might I add that we have an influx of people coming to our community seeking, seeking shelter, and they're, they aren't coming with menstrual products. They aren't available, and we have to, we have to break that down and make it as accessible as possible. And, and one more line from my resolution, where Somerville women, girls, and all who menstruate have the right to live their lives as fully as those who do not menstruate with access to basic health supplies like no-cost menstrual products. This has to happen everywhere. So, I'm putting forward this, this resolution in the hope that it does make it through the, the state legislation, that we get, get success with this, and I'm asking, Madam Clerk, that we send this to all of our state delegation, the governor's office, and all relevant departments. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor Klingon and myself would like to co-sponsor that as well. Counselor Said. Counselor Wilson. Counselor Mbah. Counselor Burnley. All right. The whole council. Thank you very much. That item is approved. Next, please.
Item 4.3 is a resolution by Counselor Burnley in support of increased safety for sex workers.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you through the chair, and for any parents who may still be here with small children, we're going to get into some interesting conversations. Before I, like, introduce a few members of our community to speak about this, I just want to lay out the reasons why I am putting forward this resolution tonight, and it starts with this. Sex work is real work, and like all workers, sex workers deserve worker rights and protections. The criminalization of sex work has never ended or stopped what is often called the oldest profession in the world, and it has never brought increased safety to sex workers. In fact, the Commonwealth's criminalization has left sex workers vulnerable, both interpersonally and to, to violence, and open to the violence of the state, subjecting them to exploitation, incarceration, disenfranchisement, and no ability to, to collectively come together to fight for their rights. We have a bill in the State House right now, known as an Act to Prevent Human Trafficking and Improve the Health and Safety of Sex Workers, that can help us in this ridiculous puritanical farce that we've been operating under, that sex work is not happening in our communities or in our Commonwealth. We know it's not true. We try to pretend that it's happening over there or to some other people, but we're invisibilizing the pain and the violence that is happening to members of our community. And I know there are members of our community because some of them are friends of mine, some of them have, I've had the pleasure of being roommates with. This is something that impacts Somerville as much as it impacts any other community across the country or the world. Too often, our governments or NG, and NGOs have conflated consensual sex work with the horrific and unconsensual sex trafficking, which hurts folks who, like all workers, choose to use their bodily autonomy to try to pursue economic stability and prosperity. Because of the regimen of ancient laws that are on our books in the, in Massachusetts, we have subjugated a whole class of workers to the shadows and deny them their worker rights and their ability to and their ability to stand up for themselves and collectively bargain. And so that's why I want to take this opportunity to ask my colleagues to support an act to prevent human trafficking and improve the health and safety of sex workers and to also sponsor Jessica Van Meere and Mary Carroll to speak on this issue. Thank you.
Excellent. Please, welcome. And please introduce yourself for our records.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jessica Van Meere and I'm a resident of Ward 2 in Somerville. I'd like to thank Councilor Burnley for bringing this really important resolution today, as well as to all the councilors that I've spoken to about this issue who have offered their strong support. I am a founding member of the Boston Sex Workers and Allies Collective, and we are a collective of sex workers and allies in Massachusetts fighting for policies which improve the well-being and safety of sex workers in Massachusetts with the ultimate goal of achieving full decriminalization of sex work, as that is the policy that empirical evidence shows improves the safety of sex workers and is supported by human rights organizations including Amnesty International, Human Rights Watch, the U.N. Office on Human Rights, U.N. AIDS, and the World Health Organization. And I am also a PhD student in public policy at the Harvard Kennedy School of Government. I've been doing research on sex work and human trafficking for 10 years now. And I have had the chance to review the large literature in this area and see that evidence demonstrably shows that any form of criminalization of sex work puts sex workers' safety at risk. And so our group has formed to come behind this bill, which is being brought forward in the state legislature by Representative Lindsay Sabadosa and Senator Liz Miranda. And this bill, "An Act to Prevent Human Trafficking and Improve the Health and Safety of Sex Workers," would do four things. The first thing it would do is create a limited amnesty provision to enable sex workers to report crimes without fear of being arrested. Currently in Massachusetts, sex workers cannot report a crime against them without fear that they themselves could be arrested for prostitution. And our group is, is currently aware of a dangerous individual who has targeted dozens of sex workers in our community, but none of them have been able to testify to law enforcement about this individual because they are afraid that they will be arrested. The second thing that this bill would do is eliminate the crime of common nightwalking, which is an archaic law which is used to target predominantly low-income women of color. The third thing it would do is create a human trafficking prevention project, which would allocate resources, including legal aid, housing assistance, and cash aid, to populations which are vulnerable to sex trafficking, including sex workers and LGBT populations. And the final thing that it would do is create a committee to study sex work policies in Massachusetts, including the possibility of decriminalizing sex work in the state. Now, we do not believe that this bill goes far enough. We ultimately want to fight for the full decriminalization of sex work, but we understand this is a complex issue and that the legislature isn't there yet. And so we believe this bill is a first step on which everyone can agree and which gives time to get the issue on the agenda. Now, there is one other bill in the state legislature which some groups are putting forward, which is the, sorry, I'm forgetting the title of it. An Act to Strengthen Justice and Support for Sex Trade Survivors. And we do not support this bill. What this bill would do is increase penalties for clients of sex workers while removing criminal penalties for selling sex. And this is a policy model known as the Nordic model or the end-demand model, which has been implemented in countries including Sweden, Norway, and France. And although this bill is well-intended, right? In theory, it's intended to remove criminalization of the people selling sex and target the buyers instead. In practice, what actually occurs in countries that have implemented this model is it increases law enforcement surveillance of sex worker communities, which keeps the industry underground. And it makes it harder for sex workers to screen clients for safety because they're less forthcoming with their information. And so we urge the legislature to listen to both sex workers and to international human rights organizations and not pass that policy, which has been shown to cause harm to sex workers, but rather to take this first step, which would enable sex workers to report crimes more safely and study full decriminalization. Thank you. And I will pass to my colleague, Mary Carroll.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello and thank you very much. My name's Mary Carroll and I'm a resident of Boston, but very pleased to be able to speak to you today. I have been a sex worker since July 8th of 2000, and that is a day that I celebrate. I remember that day feeling very excited, very curious, and also wondering about this mantle of stigma that I had just dawned. Since then, my work as a sex worker has spanned various aspects of what can be included as sex work and spaces varying in their degrees of safety and criminalization. Since then, I've also been an independent scholar of sex work, focusing primarily on the movement for sex workers' rights, which in the U.S. we can trace back to 1973 roughly, and the writing that sex workers have produced about their lives and work. And I'm now a graduate student in Boston to formalize that scholarship. I have benefited immensely as a sex worker from two things. First is my privilege as a white cisgender woman with a college education, whose queer identity is often not perceived. And second, from community and mentorship with other sex workers. As an advocate, I recognize that whether or not particular types of sex work are legal or illegal, all sex workers are impacted by the stigma that is reinforced by criminalization. This leads to difficulties accessing many basics in life, including medical and mental health care, banking access, financial advice, and housing. And I would include in that also the opportunity to socialize without so much fear about who may know who we are. I support our bill because while it is far from the decriminalization that I'd like to see, it does enable sex workers to obtain protection under the law when they experience or witness a crime without being harmed by the carceral system. It is a crucial first step in making sex workers safer, and I think it demonstrates the reality that systems that criminalize people cannot also protect those people. I oppose the Nordic model because quite simply I find that its goal of eliminating sex work to be dehumanizing. Since 1973 in the U.S. and globally, sex workers have been advocating for our rights and recognition. And I thank you very much for considering this resolution, which does recognize us and the values that we have been long fighting for, to see represented in public policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I will be signing on in support of this resolution as well as the legislation. You know, I'll just put it simply, whatever your thoughts are on people's personal choice as a harm reductionist myself, I see this as a way to lessen the harm that is done to what is essentially has been stated, something that does exist and will exist in our community. So it's an acknowledgement of that, if nothing else, and as well as, than those individuals' rights and, and protection so that they may not be violated and not be able to have any recourse. So for those reasons, without getting into anything else, I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Wilson would like to sign on. Councilor Said would like to sign on, as would I. And Councilor Scott.
Thank you.
Councilor Pineda-Nufeld would like to sign on as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank my colleague at large for bringing this and for bringing these voices into the room. Also, I want to thank the advocates who have been doing incredible work. Forming a community in the midst of active criminalization, active persecution is incredibly difficult, but we see that it happens over and over again, whether it's undocumented neighbors or our neighbors who are working just to survive in, in any way that they can. The, the span of people who engage in sex work is wider than I think most people realize. And this is an important asset, an important first step, although it would not be the first step for the Somerville City Council. Those of you who have been here a while will remember back in 2019 when this body supported House Resolution 702, the People's Justice Guarantee. That was a bill from our representative, Ayanna Pressley, which explicitly in our resolution, and I'm glad to see members of the Somerville Police Department here tonight, guys, this one's for you, that the city council requests that the Somerville Police Department decline to arrest or seek prosecution for consensual sex work and further that Somerville supports decriminalizing. So this was a resolution that was passed, put forward in 2019 by myself, co-sponsored by many of you sitting around the table here tonight. And then it was passed, the resolution was passed in 2020. So I'm proud to be a part of a body that recognizes the human dignity of work and the fact that we should allow our neighbors to, to pursue their work in the way that is safest for them. So I thank the, I thank my colleagues for their support tonight for this measure put forward, and I'm happy to co-sponsor as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Excellent. And Councilor Strezzo indicated that she would like to co-sponsor as well. Councilor Burnley.
Thank you. Before I ask that this be approved, I'd like to make a motion that the bill numbers at the resolved clause be corrected to the aforementioned bill number at the top of the item, which I am, I have been assured by the clerk she understands.
Excellent. Seeing no further discussion, thank you both so much for your leadership on this and for the collective that you're here representing. And thank you, Councilor Burnley, for bringing this. That item is approved, as amended.
Item 4.4 is a resolution by Councilor McLaughlin that the administration utilize ARPA money to address excessive water bills for residents.
Now, we're gonna be discussing some potentially inappropriate stuff, so Councilor McLaughlin.
I'll make it inappropriate, Mr. President. So has anyone heard that people's water bills have gone up a lot this past few weeks? Just so, if anyone doesn't know, basically, everyone's getting charged for back payments that, for no fault of their own, the city failed to collect that money. Long story short, it's one of those situations that we're repeatedly basically told, there's nothing we can do, the law is the law, what are you gonna do? I'm looking at email right now. This person has, came in just shy of $25,000 for a water bill. And I don't know, even a person of wealth would have a difficult time paying that off in an expedient fashion. So I have a temporary solution and one, and I do want to acknowledge too that I'm doing some Monday morning quarterbacking here. This is not something I thought of years ago when we got this ARPA money and said this is what we should do. So don't want to play like, you know, I had some great idea and nobody listened to me because it, but it is something that's been bothering me. We have this American Rescue Plan money, tens of millions of dollars that was going to relieve cities of things like their infrastructure. And to see some of the, first of all, I do believe there's still a few hundred left, $100,000 that are not accounted for, that could at least help people with their interests that's accumulating, so people get in charge interest on the money that through no fault of their own be in charged. But I also think I look at some of the things that we are spending money on, and there's just a lot of studies. And one of them actually, whether it's through the rescue plan or not, we're studying the possibility of helping people with their water bills. And it's like, how about we use that money to help people with their water bills instead? So what I'm proposing is, at least for this one year, use some of that money to pay people's water bills until the city figures out how to correctly assess how much money is being spent on water, till they calculate it. There seems to be a lot of problems there. And in a weird situation that's not usually had in the city, we actually have free money to address this problem. So I'm asking for the mayor's office to consider this, even just for this one year, until we figure out how to deal with our water bills in the future.
Thank you. Councilor Pineda-Nufeld would like to sign on, and Councilor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. I want to thank our colleague from Ward 1 for bringing this forward. We're hearing a lot about this one. I'm here for creative thinking on this one. And I'll, I'll tell you, the interest that was mentioned there, it's mandated by Mass General law, 14% APR. So we're looking into the possibility, our legislative policy analyst and I are talking to the administration, to city staff, to our delegation on Beacon Hill about whether we might be able to do something about that. So stay tuned for news on that, hopefully soon.
Councilor Strezzo would like to sign on, as would Councilor Mbah and Said. Councilor Klingon.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President, through you. Thank you to the good council from Ward 1. I mean, I'm, I'm down for anything that'll help relieve some of the pressure from these, these bills that are hitting people. And I just wanted to, hopefully not jump in the gun. I don't know, did you say you want to speak or just sign on? I think she just signed on. I want to highlight Councilor Strezzo's public hearing on water bills on May 15th so that anybody who's listening, just so everyone can get a real picture of what's going on, to come to that public hearing and let, let the administration and everybody hear your frustration and just how bad the situation is. That's all.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, that item is approved.
Item 4.5 is a resolution by Councilor McLaughlin that the administration develop a program to recruit and train Somerville High School students to become firefighters and police officers in Somerville.
Councilor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I see firefighters and police and parents of children in our school system here, so it's a good time to talk about this. Most people are probably aware at this point of the issue we're having with lateral hires with the fire department. And one of the things that came to mind to me is, first of all, I talked to some school committee people, hearing from other people in the community, you know, the police fire department disproportionately white, that's not any different from most cities in Massachusetts, so I don't see lateral hires solving that problem. But we have a school system that are disproportionately students of color. And then of those students, we learned at the last meeting, about 10% of students have no plan for what they're gonna do after high school. And in my mind, we're growing up in the city, going to high school here, it's the people who have no plan that often fall through the cracks. And if they had an opportunity to have a job with dignity, things could be better for them and better for the community as a whole. So we also had a program a few years back called the STAR Program, which was meant for students in the high school to learn about how to become a police officer. And unfortunately, that got cut in budget cuts years ago. And I think it just got caught up in the frenzy of things outside of trying to help students. So we have a framework already set up to actually implement a program like this for police, and I'd like to see it expanded into fire as well. I think letting people know, even students at the high school, just letting them know when the test is would be a huge step in the right direction. And I also think teaching them to the test, this is one of those situations where teaching to the test would be a good thing because you, it's not a very difficult test, but you're gonna get like 100 in order to even be considered, really. And these are kind of small lifts in my mind. They may take a little bit of time, they may take some money, but doing this would actually address a lot of issues. It would address diversity in our city, it would give kids a leg up in the city, and I think it would just be a 100% positive thing, even if it led to just two or three kids from the city getting a chance to be a cop or firefighter. So I'd like to see that happen. I think it's doable.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Wilson and then Klingon.
Yeah, Mr. President, this is a fantastic idea. I know Stephen Fleyth, who we heard come speak two weeks ago, has done some work on, on this front. He went through the process himself, and from conversations with him, I know, you know, he's brought up issues like the cost of the test as an obstacle for, for community members, the fact that sometimes you have to go out to the suburbs to take the test, helping folks, helping folks get out there. These are small things that we could potentially help with as a city if we're looking to, to bring in more people locally here to, to pursue these, these careers. And yeah, to what Councilor McLaughlin said, teaching to the test, teaching, you know, our young people how to, how to get a good score on this exam. So yeah, definitely support this. Really glad to see this brought forward. I'd love to see us do something on this front.
Councilor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I also support this, would like to sign on. You know, I grew up in this city, and I don't know what the perception for the kids is now, but when I was growing up, I, it was definitely sort of thought that you had to know somebody, you had to be related to somebody. I didn't know that there was a civil service exam that was as, you know, as fair as can be, so long as it's used properly. And so since I've gotten on, I've been advocating for, you know, whenever they do these career days, making sure, and I think they have, you know, to the, to the credit of the HR Department and the fire department, letting kids know when these, when the tests are, gearing them towards the test, letting people, even just other residents, know when the test is. Because again, this was like, I didn't know, I thought there were secret buttons you had to push, I just didn't know that, you know. A lot of people end up just following family members because they know the path, whereas kids from families who aren't connected in that way don't realize that they can go take this test and be a firefighter or a police officer in the city that they grew up in. So I wholeheartedly support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mbah, did I see you wanted to sign on?
Yeah.
And Councilor Strezzo as well. And Councilor Said as well. And Councilor Said as well? Seeing no further discussion, and Councilor Pineda Newfeld as well. That item is approved.
Item 5.1 is a communication to the mayor conveying an update on police and fire hiring.
Excellent. So the council, as you all know, discussed this at great length at our previous meeting on a different agenda item sponsored by Councilor McLaughlin. So my hope is that we don't need to rehash that entire conversation, but I was asked by colleagues to invite the administration to give whatever brief update there might be, given that we have not actually heard directly from them outside of this memo that was presented to all of us several weeks ago on the mayor's intention to use lateral hiring. So speaking for myself, I don't have additional questions myself, but I think it is very important that anyone who does has a chance to ask them. So with that, the administration has a, I've been promised, very brief presentation, and then we'll open it up for whatever questions there are remaining after that.
Mr. President, request for a two-minute recess, just while they set up? It looks like they said it might be.
Sure. All right, colleagues, we'll call this meeting back to order. I see a number of folks from the administration, I'll let you introduce yourselves, welcome. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, do we have these slides? We don't have them, okay.
Yes, the slides being presented have not been shared with us until now.
Okay, thank you.
They will be. And for the public, these slides will be attached to the agenda item.
And they will be submitted.
Good evening, Council President, I'm just making, actually, can you hear me okay? Is it working?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening, Council President, members of the Somerville City Council. For those of you who are unfamiliar of who I am, my name is Llamas J. Vargas, I am the Chief Administrative Officer for the Executive Office of Mayor Katiana Ballantyne. I'd like to take this moment and thank everyone, the public and the counselors who have spoken on the topic regarding the lateral transfer at the last city council meeting. I appreciate this opportunity to present on this topic tonight, and specifically the use of the hiring tools within the civil service to protect public safety, as noted in the memorandum provided to the counselors last month, in the month of March. During this evening's presentation, Fire Chief Breen and Human Resource Director Anne Gill will address specific information in the slides shown to you this evening that are intended for the clarification, and at the end, answer any questions that the Honorable City Counselors may have. This moment, I'll turn it over to Director Gill and go from there. Thank you once again.
Thank you very much, really appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the administration and human resources from the city of Somerville. I'd like to start by saying, I think I'm confident in saying that I can begin talking with everyone here and the audience and people at home who are watching this, that we can start from a common ground. Our point, as well as yours, I think what we all have in common, I don't think I'm wrong about this, is the concern for public safety. And so that's where I'd like to begin this presentation, and there'll be slides, next slide, please, that I'm going to speak to, to give you an update, because as people who are not in the recruiting business, you would not have the knowledge of civil service itself, nor necessarily the hiring practices that need to be involved in recruiting civil service employees. So number one, let me start with the hiring tools. The hiring tools is outlined there, and I'm not going to insult everyone by reading them, as they're in front of you and you can read them yourselves. So the eligible list is a, I have it in front of me here, is a ranked list of candidates who've taken the civil service exam for either police or firefighter. Within this list, there are multiple categories of preferences that are determined by the HR Division, including but not limited to established residency preference. Civil service only requires candidates to reside in the municipality for an entire 12-month period, not necessarily to be lifelong residents of Somerville, but only for that 12-month period while they sit for the exam, for the preceding date of the exam. The permanent certification, candidates are referred to Somerville from the eligible list when requested for existing vacancies. So in other words, we have to interview and take from that list positions that already exist, they're budgeted existing positions through attrition, which is terminations, retirements, et cetera. The reserve certification, candidates referred to Somerville from the eligible list when requested for anticipated vacancies. The city revoked the enabling legislation to allow use of reserve lists. So that's, we have three tools within civil service, two of them we are currently able to use, and that's the permanent certification, and then the other was the lateral transfer list, which I understand is under discussion and has some controversy associated with that. But let me be clear, we have no intention of veering from anything having to do with civil service. We are not looking to break any laws or any regulations, we haven't, I've been here three years, we certainly have not done that past and the past, and we have no intention of doing that going further. What we're trying to do is, as a human resource professional, I can tell you this, when you do the business of recruiting, you look for a wide audience, you look for as many tools as you have, as many employment resources that you have, to get the best possible candidates in the door as efficiently and as effectively as possible, with keeping an eye on the fiscal responsibility. So even for positions that are not in civil service, I can tell you, just as a general rule of thumb, it's three to six months to hire folks who are civilians. In fact, when I look around the room, I think there's four individuals in the room here who I've sat on committees with for search for civilians, I'll call them, for regular staff members, and it's an onerous process. It isn't easy, it doesn't happen overnight. What happens with civil service, and I'm going to get to that in a minute, is there's a lengthy step process that we need to follow, and we need to follow that to the letter of the law. We have to, in order to be equitable, we have to follow that for every individual. We cannot veer from that process, we have to have the same people on that committee. So we have to treat every individual with the same amount of opportunity and respect, and respect, and that's what we do currently. So the lateral transfer, quite frankly, are candidates who are already employed through civil service. They're already civil service employees. So again, my point is, we are not looking to do anything that isn't already available through civil service. We're just trying to employ everything we have, every resource we have, to fill positions, again, for the safety of this city. What is different right now for lateral transfers, the reason that we're focusing on that for lateral transfers, is it's an unusual case to have 12 open positions, potentially open positions, for the Assembly Square Station. Now, Assembly Square, we know, is like a little town or a city in itself, right? It has its own needs, and we want to make sure that they have the resources and the adequate safety protections that they need and deserve. And I meant to preface my comments by saying, if you could wait until the end of this, and I'm happy, myself or the chief, to answer any questions you have, but I'd like to get through the materials first, if that's okay. Yeah, the next slide, please. We'll be at the chief.
Good evening, Chief Charlie Breen, Fire Chief, Somerville. I'm here with one purpose and one focus only, and that's public safety. And my priority is to open the Assembly Square Fire Station. I think we can all agree, it's a much-needed station for an undisturbed neighborhood right now. My only lens looking at this is, as the Fire Chief, is a public safety lens. And we need 12 firefighters to man that fire station. And it is my reality that using the certification list, we are not going to be able to open that fire station in February, when it is expected to open. We will not open that fire station for many, many months later, if we do not, without using the lateral hiring process. That is my reality. I also, there has also been talk about, well, just use overtime to open the fire station. As the Fire Chief, I don't find that that would be a good practice, and for several reasons. I feel that using overtime to man that fire station on a daily basis could affect quality of service. You would have up to six firefighters, on different firefighters, every day, working as a revolving door in the fire station. And for me, that's a problem as a manager, as a Fire Chief. You will not have the ownership that you would see in other fire stations and in other fire companies. Our basic, the way we do things is we permanently assign firefighters to certain stations and certain companies. By not having anyone permanently assigned to that station, it would lead to, I think, a lack of ownership. Equipment needs to be checked every day, fire station needs maintenance. You're not going to have, you're just not going to have that, I think, that pride, that consistency necessary, if you have every day, six different people, six different people. In addition, I have seen challenges in filling overtime in the past couple of years. A lot of the firefighters that we're hiring now, they value family time, I don't blame them, they don't take a lot of overtime. So we're seeing challenges in getting firefighters to accept overtime, as it is, under current conditions. Adding more overtime, up to six shifts a day, to an already strained overtime system, I think could also lead to problems in manning that station. And thank you for that. Next slide.
The next slide really outlines the 15-step process that needs to happen for each and every candidate. So let me outline a couple of things here. As you can see, there's 15 steps, quite a lot to go through for one individual. If you look at this from the perspective of a number of individuals, so 12, say for example, 12 individuals, we would have to interview at least 25 people, right, per civil service regulations, because it's just that you do two times the positions you have plus one. So we would have to do 25 interviews. So let me outline for you, again, not to bore you with reading this list. In order to do the interviews, we have to do a couple of things. One is coordinate the time between myself, the chief, a representative from RSJ. So that alone is an onerous task. My staff has to then coordinate with the candidate. That's, hopefully, depending on the candidate doing what their due diligence is, which is to bring us their materials, make sure they sign everything, give us all of the things that they need to submit, which does not always happen. And sometimes what happens is a wrench in the process is, we get a call, we have an interview scheduled, someone calls, I can't make the interview, my wife just had a baby. We don't say, oh, you're disqualified, we have to pay attention to that, that's a legitimate reason, that's not, I just didn't feel like coming today, I'm shopping. So we make those exceptions, as we should. So that throws the whole schedule off. In addition to that, we have to rely on a private investigator who does our objective investigation for each individual. And we do that first because we don't, we are not going to entertain time and money on an individual that we feel is not going to be suited for the job, based on their background. So automatically, we're waiting for others to help us get this process done. We're relying on vendors that still, we're still suffering, as you all know, from the effects of COVID. CHA is backlogged for physicals, we have to have people do drug testing, alcohol testing, psychological services. We're at the mercy of these folks, because they are understaffed, they're understaffed. So we, it's a scheduling nightmare to get this all done in tandem, so that we can have people then have an offer letter, have a, you know, a command, you know, an offer letter to go out to them, so that we can then have them proceed to the academy. And we do have the materials in here, and the chief could certainly speak to this more, there's a three to four-month backlog on academies. The chief cannot reserve an academy list, an academy seat, until that person has a conditional offer. So that whole process has to be gone through before a person's name can even be submitted via the academy. So you're talking a great deal, a great length of time, and just to add into that, part of our jobs, and I'm not trying to shirk any responsibility, I don't believe the chief is, I'm not going to speak to him, is we do whatever we can, we put aside a lot of time for this, it's not our only jobs. You know, we, you have paid us to run departments, and those departments exist and subsist because there's all kinds of things happening for the sake of employees. I'm not using that as an excuse, I'm saying, realistically speaking, we want to set up expectations that are realistic. I'm not going to sit here and promise anything we can't do, I just want to be realistic. And again, I know, I know that we're on the same page when it comes to public safety, I know that. And I know that you can understand that we're not taking away anything, we're not looking to not use the certification list, we have never said that, that's never even been talked about. We're just using another venue, another avenue, for us to do what we need to do, again, in an efficient, effective, cost-effective, and fiscally responsible. You know, we also know, as public employees, this money is not our money, it's the taxpayers' money. And we also know that the taxpayers, all of you, you're Somerville residents and you represent constituents, are concerned about safety. We are too, you're paying us to help with that, and that's what we want to do. Next slide, please. Now, in terms of the Assembly Square Station planning timeline, I'm just going to, I'm not going to read all of this, but I will just go back a bit to put this into context. In March of 2023, the administration conveyed to CAPM that the intention to immediately start a hiring process to address vacancies. Skipping down to, let's see, we did, sorry about that. We did, we requested the certification list for existing vacancies, the hiring process is nearly complete, and thus far resulted in hiring of six candidates, one of who was a disabled veteran. All are currently in the academy, only one certification list can be activated at one time. So to sum that up, we finished that process, right, that is done, we hired people and they're in the academy. They, in fact, I believe they were, went through CAPM, through the city council. Now, we have a new certification list that came out April 1st, right, we're looking at that certification now. We are going to have some anticipated openings through, again, attrition, retirements, et cetera. We feel confident, the chief and I, feel confident that we're going to be able to look at that list for two or three vacancies perhaps, I don't want to misspeak because we're really not sure. I don't want to misspeak, because we're really not sure on the numbers there. But we're going to look at that list, we're going to use the certification list, not the trans, not the lateral transfers, and we're confident that on that list, there are veterans, disabled veterans, that will be a part of that process. So we are not looking at not taking care of the folks that are on that list. That is not the case. Again, I can't stress it enough. So we've never talked about never using the certification list. That's not what we want to do. That's, there would be no reason for us to do that. We want to maximize their ability for us to hire, hire quickly, and as many people as we can, given that we have a station opening soon, that will be, need 12 firefighters. I think that's it. Oh, I'm sorry. In the summer of 2024, administration intends to publish a call for lateral firefighters. And the scenario that lateral hire does not result in a significant, sufficient qualified applicant pool, the number of candidates being sought on the certification list could be expanded. So we, again, we are not abandoning any avenue that we have, that we can access, to do what we need to do. Next, next slide, please. That's it. No, estimated timeline, okay. Oh, it's up there, sorry, didn't see it. So the estimated start dates, if we did lateral hiring only, we would have, we're confident we would have folks in place, firefighters in place, in February 2025. If we did only the certification list, we're talking about September 2025. And again, I'm just giving some realistic dates here. And, and even these dates, quite frankly, and again, we have all these moving parts, something goes wrong, it goes wrong. And we have to, we have to follow the same process. So there can be something that happens, a cog in the wheel, that's unavoidable, external forces, even internal forces. Something can happen. And then we have another delay in what we need to do. And the factors in considering, contributing to a timeline difference, this is an unusual situation, in that we need to hire 12 firefighters at once. You know, normally speaking, we don't have a mass exodus of firefighters, it's retirements, it's attrition through the normal employment process. But have to, having to hire 12 people to fill the gap is unusual. And also, our firefighters, the candidates, move through the steps as cohorts. So we need to put them through the paces in a specific order, because we're not going to move people through a process that they're not likely to make. That's not, that's not only not efficient, and it's not a good business practice, it's incredibly mean to do to someone, to have them put their life on hold and think that they're going to go through a process, when in fact, their background showed something that was not okay. They failed a drug test, et cetera. So we try to do as much as we can to be as efficient and expedient with our time as possible. And again, I spoke to the academy backlogs three and four months. Again, we can't, the chief cannot reserve a seat unless he has a name. The name cannot be submitted unless they have a conditional offer. So there's a sequence of events that have to happen in a, in a timely, efficient, it's a sequence of events that needs to happen in order to really get what we need to accomplish. So again, I wanted to thank you for your time. I truly do appreciate it, because I didn't, I, I want to make sure that, one, we're not, I can't stress it enough, we're not abandoning anything. We're not abandoning anything. These are perfectly legal and helpful for us to do through civil service, sanctioned through civil service, and we intend to, to do that.
Thank you all. I saw counselors Klingon, Wilson, and then Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you, to Director of HR, Gil. First question is, I guess it's to the chief, actually, too. Some of my questions may not make sense in the, in the, in the world. There may be reasons why this isn't necessarily the case, like that something can or cannot be done. So my question is, why does the, why does the station have to be staffed as soon as, as soon as it's done being built? I mean, I'm sure there'll be a punch list that goes on for a while, even at, at the quote-unquote "completion day." I mean, the high school still has a punch list of things. Would it be ready to be staffed before every, everything on the punch list is done? Like, what would we be looking at here?
From the information I have from Capitol Projects, the punch list and whatnot will be done, it'll be ready to be occupied at some point in February.
Right, it's an estimate.
Correct.
Yep. So if it isn't, I'm saying, but does the station have to be staffed as soon as it's completed?
I think the residents of Assembly Square would deserve that it would be.
Well, I mean, they're currently be, I mean, yeah, certainly, it would make, it would make things a lot easier and a lot better when, when that station opened, that's why we all advocated for it, but I'm just-
It's not only, it's not only just for the, I'm sorry, through the chair, I didn't mean to cut you off. It's not only just about providing service for Assembly Square. It is also about taking off stress and strain on the department. Right now, Headquarters is responding down there on a regular basis, and that pulls companies from Winter Hill down to Assembly. With the company down, Assembly, we will be putting less strain on the remaining, the remaining companies in the department.
Through you, Mr. President, to the chief, yeah, we know that, that's why we all supported the station, and we, you know, and we will continue to support the station. It seems like the will of the rank-and-file firefighter is that they don't want to see these lateral transfers. So that aside, so as far as whether or not it needs to be, it needs to be staffed as soon as it's, the ribbon's cut, I'll just ask, as far as picking apart the sort of the pieces that Director Gil said, as far as if one person from, since when is the practice, like, so say you say somebody from RSJ has to be in there. Why is that, and has that, and I'll give an example. We've used people in interviews for firemen that weren't even employees of the city, you know, namely, like Janice Delory, who hadn't been with the city any longer, was brought back on an interview panel. So is there, is there a strict protocol that we're following, and, you know, that couldn't be, does it have to be that way for every fireman? I know you're going to say that it does, because it has to, by law, once you do it, but I'm saying, in the past, someone could make the argument, well, that wasn't the way it was done with me, because it was done differently. So I'm just, if you're going to get technical about who has to be on these hiring panels, and how the coordination is going to be a determinate factor on speed, I'm just saying, like, is there any wiggle room around that?
Yeah, I can, I can answer that. I, I really can't speak to what happened before I came, so I, I don't know why that was, why you'd have people on the panel who weren't Somerville employees, I don't know. I, what I do know is, we're trying to, as much as we can, involve racial and social justice in our hiring panels, over police as well, because they have been very heavily involved in the community, and they too want to make sure that we're doing some things to reach out for diversity, asking the right questions. They're a resource for us. They're a resource for us. They've been immersed in the community now for a couple of years, and they are, we want to have a panel, and rightfully so. You're getting different points of view. You're not just getting an HR point of view, you're not just getting the chief's point of view. You're getting somebody else's point of view, who represents the community.
Through you, Mr. President, it's great that you want to include them, but, I mean, their inclusion shouldn't exclude somebody's sort of, like, career goal and dream, if that's going to be a determinant effect. And I just use them as an example. I mean, it could be just about anybody who makes up these panels. So, you know, with that said, I'd also ask, how is their perspective, I mean, if it's a pretty stringent situation of, you know, you're looking at certain things in the background, what would their expertise, if you, if they have any in that area, what would that bring to the table? Just, you know, just as a question. I know I'm a little off, a little off with this, but it's just because you mentioned that, and it kind of stuck with me, because I know people have been on these, and they've been interviewed with a panel, and I think it was even when you first started, that maybe that panel was put together, when there was a non-Somerville employee on the panel. So I just want to be real careful about how, how tough we talk about, like, the stringency of the, everything has to be the same and everything like that. So that's just to say, again, to the larger picture, through you, Mr. President, sorry if I'm digressing here, but that's just, in terms of the, the detail as it's been being laid out, as, you know, it has to be this, this, and this, I just, I just have a problem with the fact that, A, we haven't hired, we didn't hire six firefighters in the past six months, and now we're in this position, and it definitely seems like, you know, I just sat here and told the story about how, oh, I thought, you know, you had to know somebody or whatever, but no, you take the test, it's fair, you get on the list, you get picked, and now that's like being taken away, and I understand what you're saying, in the name of safety and all these things, but to me, it seems like September, I, I, I imagine construction going a lot longer than it's, that's claimed it's going to go, because that's always the case. So I'm just saying, I think we should be real careful about, like, how quickly we're willing to, to take away somebody's career goals and, and the fact that they're up on this list. And through you, Mr. President, the last thing I'll say is, like, the other reason why I'm asking about the station, how it will be staffed, is because I can't imagine you're going to put all 12, or whatever the number is, lateral transfers, in one brand-new station. I imagine you're going to be mixing up the, the rank-and-file, like, staff in and amongst, with some, hopefully, seasoned firefighters at the new station. So, with that said, in terms of just putting them into the mix, like, how sure, how does that really affect the new station as much as it does just being, sort of, if you started to move people over to the new station, in the current rank-and-file? And then, yeah, there would be some overtime, obviously, some, some shifting, but the way the pitch is being drawn, it seems like the station's going to lay vacant if we don't, like, hire these lateral hires. And I'm just, I'm just wondering if that's the reality here? Because it seems like we have, we're going to have to shift around people out of different stations, since, as the chief said, there's a loyalty and a sort of an ownership about a particular station, so. Those are just some of my thoughts on this whole, the whole process. Obviously, I stand against the lateral hires. I do, I, I hear your points. I, on some of them, I take issue with and don't real, I think that there are other ways. I do think that, you know, certainly, it's faster and more convenient, but I do, and it's a messy process, hiring firefighters and anybody in the city, but I do think it's possible to get it done in time, myself.
Chief, you want to respond?
Yes, please, through the chair, to Counselor Klingon. Regarding the 12, yes, obviously, I wouldn't be hiring 12 new firefighters and putting them all in one spot. I would have to move firefighters down there, with experience, obviously. But that's still, I would have to move 12 firefighters that are currently permanently assigned in positions down there, which creates then 12 vacant positions in other companies that will still have to be filled with overtime.
Right. Thank you. I just, through you, Mr. President, I just meant in terms of, I'm picturing the station, and whether or not it can stay empty for a little bit longer time, till we can get staffed the right way, or would it have staff there? We may be shorthanded in other ways, and I know you said that overtime's tough to fill and all that, but again, if it's about staffing the station, like, I feel like they, we're just, we're just going like all or nothing, like, oh, if we can't get all 12, then we're just going to, like, say, it's not, say, this is the way it has to be done, or else, it can't be done this other way. And I just, I'm not really buying that. That's all.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Three to the panel, thanks for being here tonight, and for that presentation. I do have a few questions. 16 steps definitely sounds like a very large number, but I assume we're still doing a decent number of these steps, either way, regardless of whether we are hiring from the list or doing lateral transfers. Which steps exactly would the city be skipping by doing lateral hires?
Yeah, I can answer that. It'll still, it'll still be a process, right? Obviously, we're not just going to take applications and put them on the, on the firefighters. So we'd still do interviews, we'd still do a lot of this. What we wouldn't have to do is, first of all, they'd be all trained. We wouldn't necessarily have to per civil service rules, so we need 12, we wouldn't necessarily have to interview 25, right? So that cuts down enormously on the amount of time that we would spend doing that. We'd still do background checks, we'd still do our due diligence, we'd still do our due diligence, so it's not like, you know, it, this is, I'm not, believe me, I'm not pretending that that's an easy process either. It's not. It's not. We still have to go through the process, we want people to be put through the paces. But we're talking about not having to do 25 interviews, as opposed to, I don't know, I just guess 12, 15, maybe, I don't know. And then, obviously, people don't have to go through the academy. So they're, they're ready, they're ready to, their job ready, their employee, employment is all set. So for us, it makes a big difference. It makes a big difference.
Through the president, following up on that, as we're all aware, a municipality can deny a lateral transfer. We know that all too well in this city. At what stage in the process would a municipality be able to approve or deny a lateral transfer?
I would say the process would remain the same. You know, once we give them a conditional offer, just like they do now, we wouldn't, they wouldn't have to go through the, the academy, so they wouldn't need a letter to get in the academy. So the chief can maybe speak to that.
I, I think the question is, the mayor in a different town is going to block their firefighters from switching to Somerville. At what point in the process would that happen?
We would want to see the approval, I think, as the process started. I wouldn't want to take somebody into the process, and then all of a sudden, the fire chief or the mayor says, we're not letting this person go. I'd want, I'd want to see that, that approval upfront.
Yes, because through the president, you could end up having to interview a huge number of people to arrive at a number that actually get cleared otherwise, so that, you know, what, I would, I'd want to make sure that we are absolutely certain of when that approval process would happen. Through the president, next question, we've heard equity here mentioned as a benefit to lateral hires. We've also heard there are different lists that the administration can use, and that there's one or more of these that, that would prioritize equity, civil service lists. Through the president, like, what's the truth here? What's the reality?
Yeah, I, I can speak to that. I, I think what you're referring to is the reserve list, and that is the list that, and this was prior to my arrival. Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Clarify what list you mean.
Through the president, I'm talking about, we're hearing that there are, there are different civil service lists you could, that you can request, and that one of those is one that would prioritize a diverse candidate pool.
There are, I, there are at least two lists that you could use, a gender list and a language list. We've, we've looked into the gender list to increase the amount of females. Boston tried it several years ago, ran into steep roadblocks. It's a very, very difficult process to do, and they did not move forward with it. Also, regarding the, the language lists, again, it's a very complicated process, requires a lot of data and whatnot, and just because we hire people that speak certain languages is not going to guarantee that they are of that nationality.
Through the president, that's, that's interesting. Thanks, thanks for shedding some light on that. That's something we've been hearing a lot about. My final question, House Bill 4520, an act to modernize civil service laws, was recommended out, or out to pass, or likely to pass, and referred to the Ways and Means Committee a week ago. What impact would this have, were it to, to pass, on both the difficulty of hiring from the list, and possibly any current plans that you all might have to do lateral hiring?
Through the chair, from what I've seen of the legislation, I think it would help us. But I don't know when that legislation is going to, if, if it will pass and when it will. But I think it will, I think it will aid the city in the hiring process.
Through the president, it's, it seems to be one of these rare cases where something is actually moving at a pretty rapid pace through Beacon Hill, so I do think it definitely bears watching for us as a city. Thanks.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, and I want to thank my colleagues for these great questions. I, I want to follow up first, before I get to mine, because I'm a bit confused. But following up to, to something my colleague at large just asked, so we can request a list of just women who've taken the test? No, that's not true. So what is a gender list, then?
There, there is such thing as a female list, but the, the bar, the, the bars that you have to achieve to request that list are practically unattainable.
Oh.
And I believe, from a report I read, when Boston tried it, the MCAD got involved also and declared it, that it was not, it was not acceptable to do that.
Do you have any documentation on that?
I will, I'd be glad to share it.
That'd be great. I'd, I'd love to, love to do the reading, chief, you know me. Also, I wanted to follow up on just a quick question, because I heard the question asked, what steps would be skipped, skippable here in the lateral hiring process? I heard step 15, for the two-week internal training in the academy. I didn't hear any other steps. I just heard that you'd only, you'd only have to interview 12 people instead of 25. Are there any other steps on this list that get eliminated from the process? When you do laterals instead of civil service hiring?
No, we would still do, we still do due diligence, we would still do background checks, we would still do drug screens, et cetera. Yep.
So February, March, April, May, June, July, August, September. So eight, eight months longer to do 13 extra interviews? That's, that's what, that's what we take away from this? Okay, all right, that's good to know.
For the record, I was shaking my head yes. So yes, it would be.
All right, so eight, eight- All right, so eight, eight months to do 13 interviews, got it. I guess I'm curious, on one of these slides, a little bit later, when you were talking about the plans and the timeline, there was a comment that if the transfer, lateral transfer hires fail to fill the seats you want to fill with them, yeah, there you go, the number of candidates being sought on the certification list could be expanded. So I guess I'm a little confused because you made a big deal about only being able to put, request a list for existing vacancies. So are lateral transfers allowed to happen when, without having an existing vacancy in place?
Laterals will not be hired until the vacancy exists, which is when the fire station is open.
Understood, but are you going to be able to begin the interview process any sooner for lateral transfers than you would for civil service, for a certification list? Again, this goes back to the question of whether or not the eligible vacancies exist at the time. I'm sorry if I'm asking this question in a confusing way. I don't think I'm going to get a great answer here. Let me, let me just go on to another one. And this is for Director Gill, Mr. President, through you. You mentioned something about being more humane to be able to screen folks out of the process early, and you used the example of a drug test. We can go back to the steps that were here. Yeah, you mentioned, you know, if somebody fails a drug test, then you wouldn't even need to really bring them in for an interview. You could just, you could screen them out, right?
Correct.
Okay, well, so now I'm real confused. Can you say that again into the microphone for me?
Well, yes. Can I say yes again?
So you would perform a drug test on somebody and then bounce them from the process before they've had their interview?
Well, it's, yeah, it's part of the process. These are the steps in sequence that you see up there.
Well, that's why I'm a little bit confused, Director Gill, because that, that step of the drug screen is step 10. The, the interviews happen in step five.
Right, well, let me back up for a minute. The first thing we do is we do the background checks, right? So as people go through the process, again, it's sequential. So we wouldn't necessarily, like, first of all, we do the background checks, we do people's investigation into their background, their employment history, their residency, et cetera, et cetera. So we do all of that. As they go through the process, we wouldn't automatically disqualify them then. We, we have a process that we go through. They go through a physical, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, I guess, I guess that's why I was a little confused because it sounds like, from, from what you just said and what you said earlier, that, that that failed drug test screen could, could bounce them out of the process. It'd be more humane, right? You wouldn't have to put them through all this, which is definitionally a violation of Mass. General Law, Chapter 151B. In fact, it's the exact same violation that the Civil Service Commission found against the city in multiple cases, including Duval versus Somerville back in 2017. So I'm, I'm real confused right now.
Understandably, my mistake. So we go through all of the pros, like I said, it's sequential. So you're right, we do decision letters, drafted, et cetera, et cetera. Then people have the hair sample, drug screen, the physical, urine, psychological, all of that after that. So I misspoke. We don't just say, look, you're going to do a drug test and now you're just disqualified. So.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was a misstatement as opposed to a, a statement of violation of state law here. We, we get those sometimes. All right, and I guess, Mr. President, I'm, I continue to be mystified. I understand Somerville is not Cambridge, it's not Quincy, it's not Malden, but the hiring of firefighters is something that's common across all civil service communities here. And it's stunning to hear that the extra 13 interviews are going to cost the city eight months of process. I'm not sure how that happens, frankly. And, and I know that there are examples of other communities being able to do this process in, in fair, in full, using the certification list. In 2023, City of Quincy did 16 firefighter hires in six months, start to finish on the process. Malden, and this year, I believe, just finished up a process. It took three months to hire six firefighters. So I, you know, I appreciate this presentation, I am unmoved by it. I, I still feel that it is in the city's best interest and certainly supports the rank and file firefighters to continue with the unanimous resolution that this, this city council has put forward, and I for one remain steadfast in that call for using the proper civil service certification list as opposed to these lateral transfers. Thank you.
Chief Breen.
Through the chair, Councilor Scott, one question. Where is the number 13 coming from? I'm just a little confused.
This was direct, Mr. President, through you, Director Gill, in response to my question, maybe the clerk can check the minutes, in response to my question about which steps were skipped, Director Gill acknowledged that only step 15 would be skipped entirely, but that the difference in time from being able to hire everybody for the station in February of 2025 versus September of 2025 would be the necessity of only doing, of doing 25 interviews instead of 12. That was the statement that was made here. If you subtract September from February, that's where you get those months.
I believe the correct number of.
Seven months. Oh, you're right, I'm sorry.
I believe the correct number of interviews we would have to do though, however, is 30, 32, due to the, the banding. When people are tied, you have to interview the entire band, and I believe, I believe the number's 32 interviews we would have to do.
Oh, okay, so then let's amend the record that it would take seven months to do 20 interviews instead of eight months to do 13 interviews.
My understanding is the academy also takes a significant amount of time. That's, that's the additional difference here. I, I have a question slash comment here. You know, I, I want to say, I, I have served on a number of interview committees, and I have great respect for what the HR department does. Obviously, I have great respect for, for both of you. I, I believe that the administration is operating in good faith and is saying, we have a challenge, we have a time crunch, we think it's going to take longer than we have to, to hire from the list, we think it's going to take whatever that is, seven months longer to do it this way. I understand that and that you, that the argument is made that it's more fiscally responsible because we won't have to rely on overtime. I have a different job. Part of my job as the president, obviously, I don't speak for other counselors, but I, I try to communicate my read of where the council is at on different things. And I think that there's just a fundamental underestimation of the resolve of the council as a body on this issue, and that concerns me as like an upcoming collision of those two facts. That's just the reality that I've been trying to, you know, I think all of us are trying to communicate. It's not from a lack of respect for how much work this is, it's just from a basic statement of, of kind of the reality as I see it coming down the pipe. Are there other questions?
Councilor Klingon.
Through you, Mr. President, just on the lateral hire thing, so, so you put the word out through you, Mr. President, and then people put in for it. It could be, you know, 30 people maybe throw their, and then you make a, you make a selection from there. You said 15 at one point, Director Gill, like, if it's, how many, you're saying that because you may take three more than 12, or like, is there a number that, so what, what was the 15 and just?
It was an estimate. I don't have expectations that would have 12 people apply and all 12 would hire. I was saying a guesstimate, it might be 15 people would have to interview.
Okay, yeah, through, well, that just, well, for one thing, I just, personally, I feel like this entire thing's kind of a crapshoot because we'd have to have like, like 12 mayors willing to let a fire, fire to go, and then if that doesn't work out, like, I just see this process being just as lengthy, in my opinion, as the, the traditional process when it's all set, and especially since I don't think that the station will be done, construction's never done when it says, so I don't think it's worth what we're throwing away. And I didn't mean all new firefighters at one station. I meant even with the lateral hires, I mean, these are all people coming from outside of Somerville that don't necessarily know other Somerville firefighters, and I just wondered if, you know, how you were going to break those new individuals up. But mainly, my, my point is, is that I do think it's going to take just as much time to do it this way, and it's going to cause a lot more strife and animosity amongst the city and amongst the rank and file firefighters, and I just don't support it for all the number of reasons that we've already stated in the past.
Council President, just to, I, I want to just emphasize and maybe elaborate a little bit that the civil service has provided the executive office as a tool to not just use the civil service, but to also use the lateral tool that is provided to the decision of the mayor. Will the candidates eventually, if they go through the different steps and approval of their mayors, to apply ultimately? Yes, they will have to come before you to get confirmed. But I wanted to just remind that that is still a tool and that we are not shying away from the civil service list. There is probably maybe one vacancy right now. There might be one additional vacancy in the summer as well. Again, reminding, we're not shying away from the tools that the civil service provides, but this is another added tool that does provide at the executive level the opportunity for the mayor to provide that decision whether or not the council decides to move forward with confirmation. I'll let that be decided amongst all of you respectfully, or not, right? But I do understand your concern whether or not, will there be applicants that apply at all? Are they given permission from their mayors or, or not? I, we understand that concerns, but we also understand the safety and the concern of making sure that Assembly Square is rapidly growing and that we also make sure that we have presence there. I also wanted to just remind everyone that there is a backlog in the police academy. We don't know when the next police, sorry, fire academy will be. So we need to be very mindful of that. And when, when there is a backlog, let's just assume that we need to send five, eight, 10, there's no guarantee we're going to be able to send all 10 to the academy either. The other part of a question that I wanted to make sure that I provided any answer to in terms of the panelists in the interview, we want to be consistent in the interview panel. So if you're interviewing, whether it's one, sorry, two, five, six, eight, however number we're interviewing, that we have the same panelist for that actual cohort, quote cohort, sorry, that is going to the academy. We don't want to have three members of a panelist for this candidate and then have four for a different one. There's no equity along those lines when it comes down to that. The other one item that I would do want to also address is, yes, if you go through the civil service list, at the time that they take the civil service list exam, they have to be a Somerville resident for at least a year. With the lateral, we understand, yes, they don't have to be a Somerville resident, but currently, there's about just 40% of our Somerville Fire Department employees who'd live in the city. So I'm not saying, you know, I, I'd love to have more residents live in the city of Somerville. I don't live in the city of Somerville, but I obviously work and support and, and respect the values and the mission, but I just want to make sure that we are clear in terms of the tools that are needed, where we are on the backlog, the interview panel part of it, as well as the residency percentage that currently exists in the current fire department. I, I regret not saying that if I didn't, obviously, come here before you and mention that, but for what it's worth, to each and every one of you, our safety, and I'm sure the safety of the residents is your concern as well, and that's why we're here before you this, this evening, to provide you with just the additional supplemental information that you have today in addition to that memorandum that was presented to you last month. As always, if there's any other questions or concerns, we have an, we have the amazing IGA team, and the mayor's office would be happy to answer any additional questions, and also do a legislative monitoring of the bill that the counselor has also mentioned, and any concerns that the other counselor has mentioned in terms of any reading or information, the chief will be able to provide that information over. Thank you so much again. Have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you. Councilor Burnley has a question, and Councilor Penita Newfeld after that.
Thank you, through the chair. I did not mean to sequence my question right after that wonderful tying of the bow to this conversation, but through the chair, I just want to go back to the background check element of this because personally, for me, that is one concern that I have about potentially shipping in a bunch of currently active, quite frankly, less so with the fire, but in more, in my case, more concerned with the police, is how are we vetting these folks who are operating in other communities right now? So to that question, for steps four and 11, which are the background check and the psych exam, do you, is that going, is that a flat timeline regardless of candidate, even if they are currently active, or would having to do the, that background check for someone who's actively in this position or these positions already require more time because they, they have a longer background?
We would still do the due diligence. So even if somebody's been in their job, what we'd be able to do though, for firefighters who are currently employed, we would ask for a copy of their personnel file. So we'd be able to look at what their current history is, if they've had any issues in the fire department. We're not looking to take on somebody else's issue, you know, and we'd still do our due diligence in terms of all of it, in terms of all of it. We'd, we'd still hold people to same high standards.
Thank you, through the chair. And I, I have no doubt that you would do that. I'm not in any way trying to impugn that this process would be fair and thorough. My, my point with asking that question is just, when someone is in these positions, and in this case, I'm talking about police, and they've been doing the job for a number of years, it necessarily, in my mind, would require a more thorough background check than a candidate who has never performed the job. So from my perspective, it kind of seems like that aspect of the laterals might take longer, at least in that step. Perhaps the over/under, it still becomes under based on the lack of interviews that have to take place, but I do think it is worth noting that the background checks might take longer on folks who are actively already doing these jobs. Yeah, that's all I want to ask about. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't anticipate that to be the case, but I don't know, we haven't done it, so it's, it's hard for me to give a, a intelligent answer.
Councilor Penita Newfeld, and then I know Councilor McGlaughlin wants to speak as well.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I share my frustration with, with my colleagues about this process. I, I'm struck by the presentation this evening. It feels like the presentation that would have been given to us a month ago, and a lot of conversations have happened since then, including in this chamber two weeks ago. And I, I'm hard pressed to believe that the folks on the panel tonight did not watch that meeting or have conversations with folks who are here at this meeting about the concerns that were named and were mentioned. The presentation tonight, I don't feel answered many of those concerns. So I just want to name that. I'm sort of surprised at the content that doesn't take into account the conversation that happened two weeks ago. The other thing I, I'm struggling with, Director, I understand these are tools at your disposal, and I hope you understand that these are people's lives, that these are the lives of our constituents who are reaching out to us, who have been waiting and waiting and waiting to get off the list, who are so eager to serve this city, who have family members, generations of folks who have served this city, who are waiting and don't feel like this is a fair process for them. So it's not just a tool. These are, these are people that are coming to us that we have to respond to as counselors and say to them, our city's just using a tool at their disposal. I'm sorry that this is impacting your life, right? So I, I, I just, I want to bring us back to the people that are affected by this decision and not just, this is just another process that we're utilizing as a city, but that the people who are impacted live among us, who are neighbors, who are, you, you mentioned 40% don't live in Somerville anymore. It's really, really expensive to live here. I, I know constituents who are bunking with family so that they can get off that list, get into an apartment of their own, have a good job and stay here in the city, which, which is what we all want, right? So I, I just want to bring us back to the people this is impacting and hope that in the future, we can have a presentation that's, you know, more responsive to the conversation that happened two weeks ago.
Thank you. So we're going to place this item on file and Councilor McGlaughlin's asked.
Mr. President, may I speak?
Oh, Director Gill, please.
Excuse me, I lose my voice, I've been talking all day. But I wanted to respond to a couple of things. One was, we were here three weeks ago, three weeks. One was, we were here three weeks ago, three weeks ago, prepared and ready to speak to this issue, for this exact same presentation. So we have not been ignoring this. We have not been ignoring, we have been talking about it. And I understand that current residents are upset, but again, we don't intend to abandon that certification list. When it comes to people, that's where we're coming from. We're coming from the point of view of concern for people's safety, honestly. And we want people to have jobs. We do. We want people in Somerville to have jobs, if that's what, you know, obviously to have to sit, to be here, a resident a year, sit for the exam. You can leave after we hire you, after you sit for the exam. You can leave and move elsewhere, and many of our candidates do. I'm not blaming them. It's their lives. They can do what they want. But I think, you know, we too are coming from a place of worried about people, first and foremost. And we are concerned about safety. I hear what you're saying. We too are concerned about individuals, absolutely, absolutely. It's an employment decision. But we're weighing, we're weighing it on a bigger, bigger issue, in my opinion, in my opinion. We're not doing anything out of civil service. We're not impacting any union law. We're not doing anything that currently impacts in a negative way, in my opinion. We will have those lists. We'll have those lists. We'll have openings in the future. We're going to begin the process for current openings that we're going to have for retirees. We are not abandoning that process by any stretch of the imagination. And I think that, again, 40, the city, the Somerville firefighters make up right now is 40% of them live here. And I think people are under the misunderstanding sometimes because I knew they might have, I live in Boston, and it was a rule then that you had to live in Boston to be on the Boston Fire Department. I don't think that exists anymore. That's no longer the case here. And I have to tell you, we're looking for, you know, I wanted to correct something Counselor Klingon said, you can get on the list. It doesn't mean you're going to be hired. And I agree with you, years ago, it was sort of the folklore or the tale that you had to know somebody to get on the force and the police and the fire in Boston too. I'm speaking from Boston, I know that. But you have to get on the list. That's the first step. So the first step is getting on the list. You can move out of Somerville the next day after we hire you. You could live here for a year or five years. You know, when talking about lifelong residents, I'm from a community that I'm telling you, if you weren't born and raised there and are still there now, you are not considered a resident, a lifelong resident. So I think that's true of Somerville as well. Just because you're from Somerville doesn't mean necessarily that you're more dedicated or more of a good, a better firefighter, just because you come from Somerville. You may know the community better, you may be more invested, but it doesn't necessarily translate into performance and dedication. It just doesn't. You know, I'm not from Somerville. I work here. I'm dedicated to this job. I'm dedicated to this job. A lot of the people who work at the city of Somerville are not from Somerville, don't live in Somerville for a variety of reasons. It doesn't mean they're any less of a good employee. It doesn't necessarily correlate. It doesn't necessarily correlate. So I, we hear what you're saying, but we were here and prepared. We were here and prepared, and you weren't prepared to talk to us. I get it. I'm not using that. I'm not pointing fingers. You didn't get the document.
Thank you, Director. Just for the record, the memo was presented to this council something like 10 hours before the meeting.
Yep.
That's why we didn't hear it that night.
Absolutely.
Director Mbah, did you want to speak?
I understand that, but I'm just saying, we were ready, so we didn't ignore it.
Thank you.
Counselor, could you please yield to the counselor that hasn't spoken yet? Thank you. Counselor Mbah.
Thank you, Mr. President, for that recognition. Director Gill, thank you for your time. I appreciate you all for all the thing you do. I wasn't really prepared to speak because I, first thing I was waiting to hear why this memo was placed on file or maybe postponed was so that we can hear from community members and then anticipating that you will actually follow up, that Chief Breen will meet with the union and just have a conversation so that when you come back to us, you can say, oh, we actually met and, but it feels like nothing happened. It just feels like they came here, this whole chamber was full and they kind of like, we all were like really emotional because we don't work for the administration, we work for the community. So they spoke and we expected you to integrate your response to say, you know, this is, but I did not hear that, you know? So there's no way that we can really continue, you know? I mean, like, I just feel a little frustrated that I thought maybe, okay, this is like, you're going to probably go point by point to say, oh, this is what they said and this is how we've, you know, resolved all this, but I did not hear that. So I don't think that in good conscience, you know, I don't think, I don't, I doubt that any single person in this chamber will, you know, move forward with this, but this is where I'm coming down to. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to speak again, but I was, my name was mentioned. I just want to speak to that point that Director Gill brought up. Director, through you, Mr. President, I'm not saying like, these people have committed to living in Somerville while they're in the process, but furthermore, what gets to the, the reason why I bring this up is I think it gets to the heart of the matter and the heart being like, this is the Somerville Fire Department. So when you have people who live in the city and then you have institutional knowledge of the Somerville Fire Department, and you bring in some people from the outside that came from a different culture, of a different fire department, you're not bringing up new recruits through the ranks that learn the culture and learn the, you know, the very specific nuances and ways of the Somerville Fire Department. So that, I think, is what is important about the fact that we still have the residency requirement for the fire department. And so that is why I think it's important that we have people come up and get, you know, mentored in schools by fire, Somerville firefighters, learn how to do the job and not bring their bad habits and whatever else from some other fire department. That's why, another reason why I'm against lateral hires and I know about being from Somerville, not being from Somerville, that's not what I was getting at. Thank you.
All right. We're going to place this item on file. Thank you all.
Mr. President, I actually, I had a motion, but I also had just a question and a few comments on this item. If that's okay? So first of all, thank you everyone for attending, to the city staff, you know, I understand this is difficult. You have my respect. You have my sympathies. You do not have my support, and that's not going to change ever. And I do agree that a lot of the points I made last week were not really addressed. I do want to address some new points that I heard here. At first, this idea of like being from Somerville, not being from Somerville. I'm a lifelong Somerville resident, born and raised here. And I think it's interesting how often I have to point to people that I think that is like a rarity. Like, most people on this council are not from Somerville, but they're from Somerville now. They're here. And so my point isn't that I want only lifelong Somerville residents who have been here and know everybody. It's like, my point is, they took the test as Somerville residents, they paid for it as Somerville residents, they took the test, they took the physical as Somerville residents, they've gone on multiple lists as Somerville residents. So it's the process that concerns me about, it's not about how long you've been here because if we go by that standard, then no one's from Somerville. I'm the only one from Somerville here, so you should just hire me. So that's the point. And you, Counselor Klingon, I'm joking, but the, and this is not just about this one. I've heard this numerous times, like this measuring of who's a true Somerville resident. And as a lifelong resident, I'm constantly defending people who aren't from here and saying that, oh, this isn't about how long you've been here because no one wins that game. It's about the fact that they went through this process hoping to get a job in the city, and they are not firefighters, whereas everyone else that we would hire are firefighters. They had their dream fulfilled. I want more people to have their dreams fulfilled. Just a few other points at all. The backlog in the fire academy, I broke that down last week. According to them, that's not the case. Involvement of RSJ in this process, we don't have an RSJ director right now. And that director led a multi-year process to find a fire, a police department chief that we still don't have. We're on the second rung, so. And one of the people who works for RSJ is on the firefighter list, trying to become a firefighter. So I can't imagine that they're going to be that excited about hiring laterally outside of the city. Fire station's been delayed twice already. I'm 90% certain it's going to get delayed again. People who do the work, the guys in this audience and the people who are fighting fires, they seem okay with waiting and getting Somerville residents and getting people who took the test. They don't seem to have any problems with morale or pride about where they work. It seems like it's their pride that makes them not want to support this at all. I, I'll just say, I just really think, I think the city's underestimating how difficult this lateral hiring process will be, even with the full support and complicity of this council. I think it's going to be much harder than you think, and I think it's definitely, I can guarantee that it's going to be much longer to go forward with lateral hires. It'll be a bigger waste of all of your time to proceed with this than to just go off the list and do what we've been asking to do for years. So I do have one question in relation to that, is I know the answer will probably be, we won't get sued because we're legally correct. That's never stopped a lawsuit I've ever seen, and I do question that. So my question is, when we get sued, not if, it's a guarantee to me that there'll be multiple lawsuits. Who's going to represent the city council on that? I wish the director, solicitor was here for this, but.
Good night. I guess, why would we be sued? I don't understand.
Because it's happened so many times in our history. And I'm just saying that it, I anticipate lawsuits. So if that were to happen, we've had issues in the past where the council's made a decision or the city's made a decision that opened us up to lawsuits. And who's going to represent us because we are obviously at odds with the mayor's office on this?
I don't, yeah.
Oh, please. Thank you.
Solicitor, Mara.
I just want to say, you know, I'm not sure we're going to see lawsuits. It would depend on what the lawsuits would be and what they would look like, but, you know, as a city solicitor, I would represent the city and what its position was. It's a little premature to anticipate what it would be. I can't quite imagine a scenario where the city's going to be sued because of something the council did or something the mayor did, as opposed to something the city may or may not have done. So I don't see this as a real issue at this point, and I'm sure if and when, and I don't see that coming. We'll work it out. This is not a, this is not an issue that I see a lawsuit happening where the two branches of governments are at odds in terms of legality.
So I would definitely disagree with that and point to at least two cases that I know of, one where the city was found wrong and one where the city council was found wrong. Those have been processes that have gone on for years. So I would, I would prepare for this, and this is, I'm bringing this up as an aside because we are constantly at odds with who represents both bodies of government when they're in disagreement. So I think this is something, I'll tell you right now, if the city comes to me for funding, for a lawyer, for anything, I'm not voting in favor of that. So I hope that there's enough staff in the solicitor's office to deal with this, in which case you will be burdened with this process, so a whole other department is going to get dragged into this fight and have their time wasted. So that's all I had to say with that. I do want to just say, and on a positive note, most people working for the city right here are not from Somerville. You've only been working here for a few years. And I can at least say that I appreciate, I don't believe there's any corruption involved in any of this, and that's a huge improvement for just a few years ago. So I just want to put that out there and as a, as respect, that it's like, I understand why it's difficult for all of you to go through this, but I just can't, because of what's happened in the past, I can't, I can't move forward with it.
Chief Breen.
Just one comment to the chair, to Counselor McGlaughlin. My information on the fire academy is up to date. It is as of April 5th. The Stowe Academy is booking for July 29th. The Bridgewater Academy is booking for July 8th, and that's up to date. I have a member of the, I belong to the Metro Fire Chiefs group. We have a member that sits on the Mass Fire Training Council with the Mass Fire Director, and that those dates are up to date as of April 5th.
Just a final thought, because I, my information may be more flawed, but it's more recent. When I spoke to Eric Littman from the Fire Academy in my last presentation, which I hope people saw, it took a lot of effort to put that thing together. They say it's not as difficult as it seems, at least on their half. So I'm just putting that out there because I heard it mentioned several times tonight, and it seems like nobody paid attention to the, two weeks ago. But I'm ready to close this out, Mr. President, and I would like to make a motion.
All right. Thank you all. We will place this item on file. Not the last of it we'll be hearing, I suspect. And Counselor McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, I did want to make a motion that the city council goes on record opposed in lateral hiring within the fire department.
Is there discussion on that motion? All right. It's unanimous. Let's take a 10-minute recess. We will reconvene at 9:13.
To your battle stations, colleagues. All right, we will call this meeting back to order.
And, Mr. President, we can pick up Item 3.1 off the table.
Excellent. So let's declare this public hearing open on Item 3.1. Jackie Duffy?
Actually, Kelly Henry.
Oh, forgive me. The floor is yours, the public hearing is open.
Hi, good evening, could you hear me now?
We hear you.
How, how are you tonight? Ever Source would like to install approximately 10 feet of conduit in Quincy Street. This work is requested by the customer, they are going from overhead to underground.
Is this Jackie Duffy? Okay, great.
Yep.
I thought so. Great to hear from you.
I'm sorry about the confusion.
All right, we'll close the public hearing. Seeing no discussion from the council, that item is approved.
Thank you, have a nice night.
And the next item will be Item 6A, a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting on April 23rd, 2024.
Council Wilson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met Tuesday, April 23rd, with all five members present. We took up a 13-item agenda, officially moving through that in just 57 minutes. We unanimously recommended that you approve tonight appropriating just north of $300,000 to match grant funding to do energy improvements at 42 Cross Street, bonding out $7.3 million for the FY24 water main rehabilitation program, borrowing $1.8 million in a bond for the FY24 sewer system evaluation and infiltration inflow assessment, transferring $42,500 from the, from housing to public space and urban forestry personal services accounts to cover a potential year-end salary deficit, contract renewals and a new contract with Big Belly for rodent-proof trash and recycling units, and a number of DPW prior-year invoice payment requests totaling just north of $113,000 that were explained to the committee's satisfaction by Director Spurnight. And with Council Scott recused, we also recommended by a 4-0 vote that you approve tonight the conveyance and easement of the Union Square Station Plaza, and two easements with a grant of license connected to the D 2.2 parcel in Union Square. I just want to make sure folks understand what's happening with that conveyance and easement for Union Square Station Plaza. Basically, the developer is conveying or giving that land to the city, and we are in turn then giving them back an easement, a legal right to use that land. The developer will be responsible for maintaining and ensuring that space that is now officially no longer POPs, or privately-owned public space. With that, I ask that you accept this committee report as submitted.
The city took that land, gave it to a developer, and now we're taking it back. All right, on the committee report? The committee report is approved?
And that puts five items before the council for a roll call vote, Mr. President. I will note that Council Scott is recused on two of them, those are the two easements that Council Wilson mentioned, but he has left the room, so if the council is so inclined, you can take them all up together.
The council is so inclined.
Right. So on Items 24-0412, which is appropriating $302,720 from the Energy Stabilization Fund, 24-0476 bonding $7,310,000 for fiscal 2024 water main rehabilitation, 24-0495 bonding $1,800,000 for fiscal 2024 sewer system evaluation and INI, 24-04540 an easement on Charlestown Place and a grant of license to Union Square RLP, and 24-0541 an easement for parcel D 2-2 Civic Space Lot 2A.
On those items?
On those items, Council McLaughlin?
Yes.
Council Davis? Council Wilson?
Yes.
Council Said?
Yes.
Council Scott? Council Mbah?
Yes.
Council Burnley?
Aye.
Council Klingon?
Yes.
Council Strezzo?
Yes.
Council Pineda Newfeld?
Yes.
Council Ewan Campen?
Yes.
With nine councilors in favor, one absent and one recused, those items are approved.
Excellent, next item, please.
Item 6B is a report of the Committee on Open Space Environment and Energy, meeting on April 18th, 2024.
Council Mbah?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee met on April 18th with three members present. We discussed several requests made to the Office of Sustainability and Environment, the Department of Public Space and Urban Forestry and DPW, to update their progress on program development and planning. First, we received Director Blaze of the Office of Sustainability and Environment a letter about the proposed program of citywide curbside composting. And so they said it's working, they are currently working with DPW on preliminary research and program design, in particular to understand the ways that our neighboring cities are running these waste collection services. The committee member asked whether the idea of doing an initial pilot program in one or two neighborhoods of Somerville was still our plan, and we also asked our current experience of voluntary composting may, if they may be relevant to citywide expansion. There was a representative from Mother Island Front who joined the meeting to report their strong support for the program, and the item was kept in committee to receive updated information as the work moved forward. Then we had Director Olivera of Public Space and Urban Forestry presented a report on the ongoing progress of completing new parks and public spaces in pursuit of the city's goal of adding 125 new acres. She reported that three new open spaces were added last year and three more will open in the next few months. Her office will send the committee a full list that projects, a full list of, with the projects and the sizes and the status of the public spaces now under construction and in the planning. And third, the committee received a letter from DPW Commissioner on the status of Conway Park, where a problem of erosion of the infill layer of turf covering has been occurring during rainstorms. The state attorneys have determined that the city cannot claim damages from the contractor on the basis on, that the material used did not meet the city's specifications. However, by ensuring that proper maintenance and strict schedule of grooming, the problem may be minimized. So DPW will send the council its detailed fuel maintenance schedule. And finally, we heard from our legislative liaison that the proposal to hire an invasive species expert for the public space and urban forestry department is being discussed in the administration's fiscal year 2025 budget calculations. The committee members suggested that the administration might explore the possibility of a shared or part-time position with an NGO groups, as that this committee, this meeting report be, you know, accepted and submitted.
Thank you very much, Councilor. Council Burnley on that?
Through the Chair, just a quick question for my colleague at large. When you say that they, they're discussing creating an invasive species management position, did they clarify whether that would be in this upcoming budget, or?
Thank you. Yeah, we had that conversation, they said they will be included in the fiscal year 2025 budget.
Through the Chair, thank you, thank the administration, thank Open Space Somerville, and you're welcome, you're welcome, you're welcome, bye.
All right, that committee report is accepted.
Item 6C is a report of the Committee on Public Health and Public Safety, meeting on April 17th, 2024.
Council McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Health and Safety Committee met for about three and a half hours, which is an hour and a half longer than I usually like to hold meetings, but there were a lot of important items, including items that were discharged from other committees to discuss. So as is my tradition monthly, is to get an update on homelessness in the community. January, April 17th happened to be the day that people living under I-93 were moved from the premises because of work from SDOT. The Somerville Homeless Coalition said they helped everyone who was willing to receive help and ensured that no one was harmfully displaced from this area, so that was a positive, but we're following up on resources for people after the fact. We also recognized Jose Antonio, who is a homeless gentleman who passed away around the same time, and we addressed some issues of violence to people in the community, as well as people in the homeless community. One person in particular causing a lot of trouble for a large group of people. We also discussed the dark skies ordinance, which regulates the amount of unnatural lighting that you can have. We discussed this last year, and just had a follow-up, and through the conversation kind of realized that this is something we should discuss in legislative matters, and maybe strengthen the ordinance that we already have. Then we spent a lot of time on inspectional services, particularly the vacant property ordinance. I will go into a lot of detail, but most of this about the properties that you've all heard of multiple times from me over the years, and apparently, like, people in the city still don't know that these properties are a priority to me, or that they should be on the vacant properties list, which currently has like five or six people who voluntarily put their properties on the list. I asked the Director of ISD why the properties that I verbalized directly to him numerous times were not on the list, and there wasn't a good answer, but there was a promise to follow-up if I give them the list, my list of properties, that they'll address it in the vacant properties ordinance. And there was really some pushback about the enforceability of the vacant properties ordinance, and back and forth on that, which I'm just hoping that the city takes seriously. We discussed a property, 16 Bonner Street, which collapsed during a rainstorm a few, a few weeks ago. Apparently, this contractor was in the process of having their foundation inspected when the foundation collapsed, so they're still inspecting that area. The area's been cleaned with permission from ISD to get rid of the debris, and a lot of this is a contractor I've heard about from a lot, from a lot of residents who are concerned about negligence, without going further into that. We discovered some other paths on the state level to investigate this. We also discussed the opioid money from the numerous lawsuits that are giving us about $2 million to deal with opioid issues from the, the pharmaceutical companies that were sued and lost that lawsuit. So let's see, Director Mitchell, who is leaving the city unfortunately, said that it needs an assessment, that they're doing a needs assessment, and it has to be performed to get a feel of how to spend the funds, they're on the, heading into their third phase of a three-phase process. I asked for the council and other people to be included in this, so we can weigh in as well. We put in the total $2 million, and I stated my preference of having that money goes towards overdose prevention, and then Director Mitchell said there will be a third session, and that conversation's ongoing. Finally, we had an item from the Housing Community Development Committee about Porchfest and the issues that arise from Porchfest. Council Strezzo stated her concerns, and she said she sees instances of unsafe activity during last year's event, and at the minimum, street closures should be in place to perform information, and contact information for responsible parties should be provided to the neighborhood. We discussed security measures, such as local police versus details versus overtime versus volunteers. One of the things we discovered was, I brought up the fact that the, basically, the police department says they can't get people to do overtime, and then I asked, what about people from outside of the city? And they explained that it's a distinguishment between overtime and a detail. They used to do details, which is open to police outside of the city, as well as retired police officers, but they moved away from that. So I asked if we could maybe consider bringing that back, and then talk about volunteers to assist with traffic issues, and more public notification for people living on streets. So a very eventful meeting, and I submit this committee report to be accepted.
Thank you very much, Councilor. Seeing no discussion, that committee report is approved.
Item 7.1 is a request of the mayor, requesting ordainment of an amendment to the zoning ordinance to add Section 8.5 interim planning overlay district and the Brick Bottom subarea.
That item is referred to land use with a copy to the planning board.
Mr. President, can I move to waive the reading of Items 7-2 to 7-11 and 10-1 and ask those be sent to finance?
You may. Those items are referred to finance.
Mr. President, may I request to waive readings of 7.12 and 7.13 and ask to send them to Capem, please?
Why yes. Those items are referred to Capem. Council Burnley, would you like to waive any readings?
All right, yeah. Hello, hello, through the Chair. Can I waive the readings and ask for approval of Items 9.1 through 9.26, 10.2, and then 10.4 through 10.7, as well as 10.10, and 10.9?
Excellent. Those items are approved.
Item 9.27 is a public communication from the Somerville Community Corporation nominating Gonzalo Puigbo to the Wage Theft Advisory Committee.
Excellent. That confirmation is approved. Do we need to confirm it?
Item 10.3 is a new extended operating hours license for Eat Greek at 215 Elm Street.
That item is referred to license and permits.
Item 10.8 is renewing a garage license for Frit at 333 Great River Road.
Through the Chair. I'd like to move for the approval of this, with the condition that they install a pedestrian sensor, as all the other garages have.
Excellent. Does the clerk have that?
And Item 10.11 is a public communication from Mo Rizcala, requesting a zoning map amendment to change the zoning district of Five Homer Square from neighborhood residence to urban residence.
That item is referred to the Committee on Land Use with a copy to the planning board.
Brings us to the end of our agenda, Mr. President.
Are there any late items?
Yes, indeed. Oh, actually, no. There are no further items before the council.
Seeing no further business, we are adjourned. Have a great night, everybody.